Thank you very much.
All right, great. Okay, we're bringing this meeting to order. We are still working on our cameras. As always, we have challenges on the technology front. For those of you that don't know, the IBT is here in Jackson Center, Ohio. We are sitting in the corporate headquarters, the corporate boardroom of our partner Airstream Inc. We have just finished day two and a half, maybe, of our three-day strategy session. So we're shoulder to shoulder for this board meeting for the first time in a while. It feels great. It's been a wonderful time being here, and the meeting is now called to order. So, roll call, please. Opening ceremonies, please. First Vice President, or Vice President, Per Hamquist.
Okay. It is the custom of the citizens of the United States to start the IBT meeting with our pledge of allegiance. We invite other citizens to join us. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Per. Okay, reporting to the secretary, Terry Warren, we do a roll call. Can we use incoming voices, please, unless they're need to be speaking? We hear a little bumping and moving around unless it's us. All right, Terry?
President Eric McHenry.
Present.
Vice President Per Hamquist.
Present.
Executive Council Member Karen Fisher.
Present.
Executive Council Member Millie O'Donnell.
Present.
Terry Warren, Secretary here. Treasure Matt Hackney.
Treasure Matt.
Present.
Immediate past President Pymott. He is absent. Region One President Bart Fuller.
Present.
Region Two President RJ Marquette.
Present.
Region Three President Christine Baum.
Present.
Region Four President Brad Briggs.
Present.
Region Five President Artie Martin. Thought he was maybe going to join us online, but nope. Okay, absent. Region Six President Larry Madden.
Present.
Region Seven President Ginger Slattery.
Present.
Region Eight President Greg Badner.
Present.
Region Nine President Nancy Fitzgerald.
Present.
Region Ten President Kathy Gezi.
Present.
Region Eleven President Stephen Par. Stephen is absent. Region Twelve President Laverne McHenry.
Present.
Elementarian Joanne Miller.
Present.
Corporate Manager Lori Plummer.
Present.
Trustee Justin Humphries is not here. To President, we have a quorum. There are four absences, if we count up to.
Do we have a replacement for Region Eleven?
We do.
You may be seated.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks.
And please be seated and identify yourself.
I'm Julie Cook.
Region?
Oh, Region, Second Vice President in representing Region Eleven and Stephen Par.
Thank you for doing this.
You're welcome.
So to avoid disruptions in our meeting and in respect to all attendees of this International Board of Trustees meeting, the chair requires that all cell phones be turned off or silenced. If you must answer a call, please do so outside the room, which you are currently seated for the same reason. Please also be aware of any background noise, no matter how insignificant, which may inadvertently be transmitted during the meeting and cause a disruption. This meeting is being broadcast live on Zoom. Please make sure there is appropriate background visible for your audience if you are calling in. I don't think we have anyone calling in on Zoom today. This meeting is held online via broadcast Zoom meeting and uploaded later to the club YouTube channel. Okay, approval of minutes, Terry Warren.
Yes, I sent you all a copy of the minutes. Does anyone have any corrections or additions? If not, I will consider them approved as read. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Terry. Okay, officer reports. I have not posted a president's report. What we will be doing here after this three days of strategy is summarizing what we've accomplished and some of the decisions that we may have made today, and that will come out in a subsequent president's report. All right, other officers' report. Per Hamquist.
I have no report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Per. I guess we can go down this way. All right, Karen Fisher. I keep looking left and right. I fear where everyone is.
I have no report, Mr. President.
Thanks, Karen. All right, Millie O'Donnell.
I just wanted to report that I'm really pleased with everyone's participation at the first-ever strategy session here in Jackson Center. So far, so good, so thank you all.
Thank you, Millie, for picking the time, and it was a lot of time to pull this together. A lot of stuff happens in the background, like all of you who put on rallies or events. If it goes smoothly, it's usually because someone has spent a lot of time in the background. So thank you very much, Millie, for that. I'll kind of go to my left to kind of back across. Matt Hackney, Treasure, any reports?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a preliminary quarterly financial.
And will you cover that in your financial report update? Topic 5.1?
Not on my... It's on the meeting book.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, well, yeah, so I'll cover it then. Okay, perfect. Let's go to Joanne Miller. Would you like to present your report now, or would you like to hold it till later? New process for motion submission.
It doesn't matter. I can do it now.
Perfect.
Won't take very long. The last time we met, I presented to you a new process for motion submission that CBL Chair Tom Smithson, Lori Grassi, and I worked on with input from Lori Plummer. You offered a few suggestions that you would like to see some points of clarification. We have taken care of those omissions and have added those to the report. So this is the motion submission that we are going to implement starting immediately after this IBT meeting. So from now on, any motions that are submitted will follow this process, please, and a flow chart will also be on the website. It was not included in this packet. And then Tom Smithson made a few minor updates to the motion form itself, and it now has a date on it, so please make sure that you use the new motion form as well as this motion submission process.
Any questions from the officers or for the board? I think you may actually, I think we are trying to have it as an attachment.
Okay.
So I think if you look at the board book, there are a couple of attachments. And the idea, again, as we're learning through this, is not to put a whole bunch in line to have a 90-page document. I believe those two are attachments. If not, we can get them distributed to the board for comments.
The new motion form, this is Karen Fisher, Executive Committee Member. The new motion form and the flow chart is on board effect, but not the actual written procedure.
Correct, the written procedure, I believe, is in line here, but let's check. It should be on page...
13.
13.
So what we're trying to do, again, we're working our way through this and apologize, we're trying to have sort of the relevant stuff that you're going to be commenting or voting on in line and reference materials as attachments. That's kind of the goal. Okay, I think... Next, will Terry Warren, any officers' report?
I don't have a report, but I will tell you that within the minutes for this meeting, I'm going to have the results of all the electronic voting that's happened since the last IBT meeting, and there's one additional one because it didn't get reported at that meeting. So you can look for that in the minutes. And we're describing how everyone votes or did not vote in that. So it'll be yes, no, did not vote, or approved, declined, did not vote, abstained. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Terry. Looks like our corporate manager stepped out to try to work on the AV. We'll loop back around to her. Matt, are you paying out to go through your quarterly financial update?
First, I'll let you know that the financial quarterly results will be posted when they are final. The IBT approved the formation of a finance committee during our February meeting. Since that time, the committee has been working on recommendations for our future budgets and the designation of cash reserves. I want to thank members of the committee, Christine Kirk, Alan Rab, Karen Fisher, and Eric McHenry for working with me to develop this information. They will assist with the next budget as well. Preliminary, unaudited results through the third quarter have been provided by headquarters to me. Total income is $1,631,317, with total expenses of $1,445,791. Overall income, including the international rally registrations, is forecast to provide a small surplus of total, a total of $12,000 for the current year. Club operating expenses and income are running slightly below the breakeven point with an operating loss of $75,000 forecast for the end of the year. Total membership dues are forecast to finish about 4% above last year at $706,449. While that is an all-time high, it is about 6% below our budget due to a downturn in the second and third quarters. Formal weather and new member promotion, we're hoping to announce soon. We hope to see an increase for the rest of the year for income. And the income from the international rally, however, a bright spot, is $838,413, or 138% of forecast. General club expenses are forecast to finish at $974,532. Laverne Directory Production and Directory Production is forecast to finish the year at 111% of budget. HQ office expenses are forecast to finish at 1.6% of our budget. Preparation for the 2023-2024 budget is in progress. Most regions have provided a forecast for travel within their region. Those who have not done so should do so by May 15th. Also, a reminder, the travel expenses for those at these meetings must be submitted with a complete travel expense form. The budget for that travel was based on the club travel policy in effect at the time the budget was set. The treasurer and corporate manager were authorized reimbursement above that budget. If you want to know what your budget is, it's reflected in accounts 67,550 for the international officers, which is on page four of the spreadsheet when you get it. You may also go to the second quarter results. They'll be on the same page. And 68,500, 68,500 for the region presidents. That's on page five of the spreadsheet. And finally, this is my last IBT meeting, at least scheduled IBT meeting, is Treasure. I want to thank you, Mr. President, for the privilege, the opportunity to serve. It's been an honor, and I want to thank this board.
Thank you, Matt. And Matt did a fantastic job, as have all of you as well. I think it will probably be distributing the other reports that Matt and his finance team has done, looking at our reserves. Our financial metrics are pretty exciting, and we'll probably be using something of that format in future meetings. So thanks, Matt, for doing the groundwork on getting that going. This does not require a motion. There was an error in that. I apologize. It's information, so no motion required, approval required for the quarterly financial report. Lori, we skipped over you as you were trying to get our technology back online. Looks like you have partially. Do you have a corporate manager report today?
No, I do not.
Would you like to share anything about your corporate manager job?
We were just connected, like, for two minutes, so those that are online could see the board, and then I don't know what happened. Anyway, so what am I doing? Corporate manager report. So we're just busy, busy, busy getting ready for Rock Springs. We have launched. We're in process of transitioning from the wbcc.net to the AirstreamClub.org emails. We're in process of that, and again, just a ton of things going on. I'm sorry, I'm not more prepared. I'm a little distracted.
I haven't.
Yeah, so I apologize.
Thank you, Lori. Again, for the people online watching, we're a bit more disorganized than normal. I have to say, I just really want to thank the board for the, it's been a lot of work. We've been online, working together as a team from pretty much nine o'clock to six o'clock the last two days, and we just came back from dinner, so we're all a bit wiped out today. So apologize if it's a little bit rocky today for our meeting. Okay, thank you. I don't think we have, I have no special orders. We have no unfinished business. Are there any member comments on non-agenda items? Do we know if any comments come in from the membership, Lori?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to take the consent items. There's a little bit of a change here in the consent structure. We have two items on your agenda as consent. One, we're going to pull off of consent and put into new business for discussion, and that's item 9.2. So on the consent calendar now for your consideration is 9.1, Las Vegas Airstream Name Badge, which is motion 2023.24.R2 from McHenry, Laverne McHenry, Region 12. And we only have one thing as part of consent, so are there any objections to moving all of the consent items forward, which would be 9.1? All right, without objections, all items under consent, so item 9.1 moves forward. Thank you very much. So item 2.2, item 2.2023.24R2, McHenry, Las Vegas Airstream Club Name Badge has passed. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go down to item 10 now, which is new business. And so we're going to take item 9.2, I pulled out of the consent. And what this is, and the reason why this is being brought to the board, this actually will be taking action by the executive council later. Our bylaws that we put in place say that interest groups can be chartered and provisioned by the executive council. But this is our first one, and I wanted to make sure that all of us around this table felt comfortable with the process by which we will start to use for launching an interest group. So Region 12 President Laverne McHenry, can you talk through your motion, although we're not going to vote on it? Talk through the purpose and the financial impact of the Kayakers Interest Club.
Okay.
So Lori, can you please read the title of your motion?
To approve the Streaming Kayakers Interest Group.
Okay, can you now, we don't have to do a second, we're not voting. Can you talk through the purpose and the background, please?
The purpose is to start the process of forming an interest group.
Make sure your voice is loud, but I think we can pick you up, but just in case. Be right there.
The background is, the Streaming Kayakers was formed as a Facebook group with the desire to find other airstream adventurers who love kayaking. Our goal is to determine recommended locations where other airstream adventurers have kayaked and link our members together who want to meet and kayak together, appealing to both the whitewater kayaker and the more common kayaker water hiker, as it's termed. That would be rivers and streams. The statement of purpose is, the Streaming Kayakers Interest Group's purpose is to bring together the airstream owners who love kayaking on lakes, rivers, and oceans, to be a resource for kayak gear, favorite kayak destinations, and general learnings of kayaking. We gather for weekend kayaking and other airstream owners and form airstream rally kayak day trips that may include community service efforts, such as water cleanup and while enjoying the sport.
Just to keep you familiar with the mission statement and financial impact, please.
Mission statement is, the Streaming Kayakers Airstream Interest Group's mission is to gather airstream owners who also like to kayak to enjoy, promote, and preserve the waterways in which we enjoy kayaking. Financial impact is none.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, we're not going to vote. Are there any questions or comments from the officers? Matt Hackney.
Matt Hackney, International Treasurer. Yes, I'd like to know, since interest groups don't have a formal charter and don't necessarily have officers, how is this interest group planning to allow us to sign up and become a part of the interest group? Has that been determined?
It has not been determined.
Okay, thank you. Give us some more thoughts. I think you guys have thought about it, so.
Yeah, we'd like to follow some of what the intra-clubs are doing and pattern ourselves after that, right? It's not necessarily a large group, but exactly the title, an interest group. So we would probably use the same platform for signups, hopefully with EC approval.
Thank you. Any other questions from officers? All right, Millie?
Millie O'Donnell, Executive Council Member. It's nice to see this motion come up. I'm excited to see interest groups, as we approved last year, start to bubble up. There's so many that can happen. For this one, I'm sure you're going to be the groundbreakers, so there'll be some questions. But I think the overall purpose was to have a group a little more loosely formed, a little less formal, and just kind of grow with it.
Grow with it. I love it. I love it. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from the board, region presidents? Our region vice presidents? Okay, thank you, Laverne, again. We will discuss this in the exec council. I don't see an issue with moving forward. I understand that there's some interest in doing, they're doing something at the international rally perhaps, so we think we can probably get that taken care of before they get there. So thank you for helping bring this forward. Okay, item 10.0, a new business. Item 10.1, revised wording for region president reimbursement. This is a motion from RJ Marquette, Region Two President. RJ, would you please read the summary of your motion?
The goal of this motion is to clarify the permitted uses of the budget for region officers.
Could you read the motion, please? I moved the... Sorry, go ahead.
I moved the policy 16.6.3, financial dispersment, Section G, Items 1 and 2, be revised by deleting Section G, Items 1 and 2, and inserting a new Section G, Items 1, 2, and 3, and renumbering the remaining item 4.
Thanks, RJ. And do we have a second for this motion?
A second.
I think the first one was Region Three. Okay, Christine Baum seconded. Thank you very much. All right, RJ, now that that's seconded, please read the purpose, the impact, and the background, the financial impact.
The current wording in the policy manual is extremely confusing. This motion is to clarify that wording. Background, based on a recent email discussion, few members of the IBT understood the current wording for travel reimbursements for regional officers. This motion is intended to clarify that policy. The financial impact is none.
Do you have a revision to make?
I do have a slight revision to make, yes.
Okay, if you could please state the revision.
So in Exhibit 2, Item G, the first few words should say the president or a region vice president. Clarifying that we cannot, multiple people cannot claim real.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I caught that. It'll be in Exhibit 2, G.2, is that correct?
I'm sorry, G.
Opening paragraph.
The first few words right there, yeah.
So say it again, the region officers.
The president or a region vice president will be reimbursed based on the budget approved by the IBT, and so on.
Okay, great. So we'll ask for questions now? Okay, are there any questions or comments from the officers, international officers? Matt Hackney?
I want to thank RJ for this clarification. I've had a number of questions from region presidents, and I think this will be a very helpful change to the wording. Thank you, RJ.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from international officers? Questions or comments from the board? Region vice presidents? Okay, so with... Oh, so, yeah, without, without... I forgot the words already, I suppose. All right, are we ready for the vote? All right, thank you. So without objections, motion 2.23.23R, sorry, yeah, 2.21.R2R2 Marquette, revised wording as revised, will pass. There's no objections. Motion passes. Thank you, RJ. All right, thank you. All right, the next is item 10.2. It's dues collections clarification, and this is item 2023.23R2, Smithson dues collection clarification. Tom, are you online?
Yes.
Oh, there he is. Hey, hi, Tom.
All right, thanks, Tom. Can you please read the summary and the motion, please?
I would if I had it in front of me, and unfortunately, I don't, so... If you would mind reading it, Mr. President, or the secretary.
Secretary, we'll read it.
All right, summary. This motion clarifies WBCCI's practice for the collection of international dues as well as practice for suspension as a result of non-payment.
Yes, thank you. Read the purpose. Sorry, the motion language. I moved that.
I move WBCCI bylaws, Article 4, Membership and Membership Privileges, Section 12, Membership Dues, Part C, be deleted in its entirety and a new Section 12, Part C, be inserted.
Do we have a second?
No second.
No second, since it's from a committee? Okay, sorry about that, Ginger. All right, so Terry, if you could read the purpose, impact, and background, financial impact for Tom, please.
I'd be happy to. Purpose and impact. This motion removes outdated language relating to international dues collection and clarifies the suspension practice for non-payment. Background, as of on the first 2021, dues are collected on the date of expiration of a member's membership for all new members. Memberships prior to this date share a common expiration date of December 31st. The bylaws language dealing with suspension for non-payment of international dues is changed to reflect this new reality. Financial impact, there is no financial impact.
All right, questions? Do we have questions from the officers? Questions from the board, region presidents? Questions from the region vice presidents? Okay, are we ready for the question? All right, so without objections, motion 10.2, item 10.2, motion 2023-23R2, Smithson dues collection clarification will pass. Are there any objections? All right, motion passed. Thank you, Tom. Great job on this.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to item 10.3, which is clarify and reorder policy 16.6.10, airstream numbers. Matt Hackney, if you could please read your motion, your title, your summary, and your motion.
Clarify and reorder policy 16.6.10, airstream numbers. Summary, revise the policy to clarify that airstream numbers may be displayed in a variety of ways and that display is required for some club activities. In addition, reorder the sections to follow a more logical order. This is presented to replace a motion set aside at the February 2023 IBT. I move the policy 16.6.10, airstream numbers be deleted in its entirety and a replacement policy 16.6.10 be inserted. The language, while largely unchanged, is intended to clarify that airstream numbers may be displayed in a number of ways in addition to the traditional method. Specific instructions and altered display methods may be found on the club webpage, and that display is required for participation in some club activities. In addition, the order of information is revised, revise first why we have airstream numbers, how they are used, that, I'm sorry, how they are issued, that some numbers are reserved for specific purposes, and that some numbers are reserved as heritage numbers.
Great, thank you. And, and do we have a second for this motion?
Second. Oh, can I second? Oh, I just said, okay.
All right, second. All right, you can please, Matt, read the financial impact, please.
Okay, financial impact. There is all the purpose and background.
Yes.
The purpose of this motion is to provide updated display information which better reflects the current acceptable practice, consistent with information provided to members, in addition to better organize this section in the policy. Background, this motion was developed in response to questions asked during discussions with the new, with new members, and has been discussed extensively by the IBT and the region vice presidents. Financial impact, there is no financial impact.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, discussion time. Any comments or discussions from the international officers? Okay, any input or discussion from region presidents? Our region vice presidents? Okay, well, then, so without objection.
Yes, object.
Excuse me?
Object, Region Nine.
Okay, Region Nine objects. Okay, then we will do a roll call vote.
Ready.
Ready.
Okay. Question was made by, okay. First by President Pierre Hamquist.
Yes.
Second, Region Nine President Nancy Fitzgerald.
No.
Region Eight President Greg Badner.
Yes.
Region Six President Larry Madden.
Yes.
EC member Karen Fisher.
Yes.
Terry Warren, yes. Region Ten President Kathy Gezi.
Yes.
EC member Millie O'Donnell.
Yes.
Region Two President RJ Marquette.
Yes.
Region Eleven Representative Julie Cook.
Yes.
Region Five President Artie Martin, is he online? No?
No.
Okay, he's absent. Region One President Bart Fuller.
Yes.
Region Seven President Ginger Slattery.
Yes.
Treasurer Matt Hackney.
No.
Immediate President Tim Odis absent. Region Three President Christine Baum.
Yes.
Region Twelve President Laverne McHenry.
Yes.
Region Four President Brad Briggs.
Yes.
Okay, we have sixteen, yeah, let's see, wait, one, two, three, four, five, six, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, yes, two absent, two no. We, it passes.
Thank you. The motion passes, it is written. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, IBT, and thank you for region presidents for the extensive discussion that you had. It was, it was really a great discussion, in my opinion. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to Item 10 dot four, Standing Committee Reorganization, Policy 3 dot 11, Standing Committee Update and Related Policies. This is Karen Fisher and Matt Hackney. Who's going to be reading the motion title? All right, thank you. Karen, if you could please read title and motion, please, summary and motion.
Motion Title Standing Committee Reorganization Policy 3 point 11, Standing Committee Update and Related Policies. Summary, a motion to revise Policy 3 point 11, General Duties of the International Standing Committee, Policy 9 point 6 point 1, Region Operations, Item D, Qualification and Requirements of the Region President's Position, and Policy 10 point 1 point 1, Duties of the International President.
If you could please read the motion?
I move that WVCCI Policy 3 point 11 be deleted and a new Policy 3 point 11 be asserted. In addition to reflect the elimination of the International Rally and International Rally Site Standing Committees, I move to change the following policies. Policy 9 point 6 point 1, Region Operations, Item D, Qualification and Requirements of the Region President's Position, Item Two, Item J, by deleting and assist the International Rally Committee planning for and in the operation of the International Rally at the end of the sentence. The new Item J will read, assist the International President and other officers and committees in the conduct of club business as requested. Item Two, Policy 10 point 1 point 1, Duties of International President, Item D, demonstrate fiscal responsibilities, Item Two, by replacing the comma between corporate manager and treasurer with the word and, and deleting incoming president and international rally coordinator as well as the International Rally Committee, the new Item Two will read, working with the corporate manager and treasurer, develop the International Rally budget.
Thank you, Karen. Is there a second for this motion? All right, Pierre Hamquist seconded. Thank you. Karen, can you read the purpose, impact, and financial, the background and financial?
Purpose, impact, the proposed changes complete the work of two special committees requested to look at changes to the standing committee structure as a result of changes approved to the executive functions of the club. These changes are consistent with changes to bylaws, Article Three, committees approved by the IBT in February 2023. Background, at the delegates meeting in July 2020, changes were approved to the structure of the Executive Council and IBT. These changes to the International Standing Committees will support the new structure and allow for better interaction between the IBT, Executive Council, and the International Standing Committees. A special committee reviewed the structure of all standing committees and interviewed current committee chairs for input. Based on the work, a second special committee was asked to look specifically at the International Rally, International Rally Site, and marketing standing committees for recommendations. The new Policy 3 point 11 will now properly implement the standing committee duties and descriptions approved in changes to bylaws, Article Three, approved in February 2023. In summary, the consolidated changes presented in this motion are, budget replaced by a new finance standing committee with a revised membership structure and additional duties. Caravan, the duties were updated. Constitution and bylaws, duties updated. Ethics and grievance, no changes to what was approved in February 2023. Family, youth, duties updated. Historical, duties updated. Information technology, duties updated. International Rally Committee discontinued, duties previously transferred to the corporate staff. International Rally Site, committee discontinued, duties previously transferred to the corporate staff. International Relations, duties updated. Lifetime Membership Fund, committee discontinued, duties reassigned to finance and membership committees. Long range planning, no changes. Marketing, committee discontinued, duties previously transferred to the corporate staff. Membership, name and duties updated, now membership, outreach, engagement, and retention. National event rallies, changes to formatting only. Planning guides, name and duties updated, now volunteer training, resources, and support. Publications, duties updated. Recruitment oversight, changes to formatting only. Technical duties update. Beated. Financial impact, there is no financial impact.
Awesome.
Wow.
Give that lady a glass of water. After a long day, that was phenomenal. Thank you, Karen.
See what's inside.
We don't want to see. Well, if I'm informed the camera is on, we just can't tell. All right, thank you, Karen. All right, so discussion, any questions or discussion by the international officers?
They did a great job.
Yes.
Absolutely.
That was a lot of work.
A heavy lift. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Any, any questions or discussions from the board, region presidents? All right, our region vice presidents? All right, so without objections, Motion 2023 dash 28 R1, Fisher Standing Committee Reorganization, Policy 3 out of 11, Standing Committee Updates and Related Policies will pass. Are there any objections? All right, it is passed. Thank you. All right, the next phase of ours is we're going to be going around the table and doing region business and announcements. I think, given our order is kind of strange because we don't have a normal table, we're going to go from my left. So Region Seven, Slattery, you would start off the updates from, if you could please, since we're not at the normal places for the record, please state your name and the region, please.
Ginger Slattery, President, Region Seven. We're all excited. We're starting all of our rallies. I mean, last weekend, I think, was the first of our rallies, and Region Seven rally is going to be a spring green concert, so it's my very first rally, so please come and join us. Other than that, things are just going along.
Ginger.
Greg. All right, Greg Badner, Region Eight, and we just finished our Region Eight rally the end of April. We had, I believe, sixty-three rigs. First time in many, many years, we had an airstream dealer out of Wentzville, Missouri, Bill Thomas, who attended the rally himself, along with the manager of the airstream dealership. They brought four new trailers to display. They conducted a learn how to back up your trailer program for anybody that wanted to learn, and it was wildly popular, including my wife. And so we just had a great time. This was at the Second More Springs Whitetail Ranch in Kansas, which was a secluded area. Feedback was tremendous. Next year, our region rally will be in Branson, Missouri, and so I think we'll have another great rally. We've been there before. And just thanks to all of my VPs and the other people in the region that have helped me do my job through my last year and almost two years, ten years. So that's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Greg. It's been a joy. I can say it for everyone, but it's been a joy working with everyone. So, and somebody else, don't look so happy that it's your last IBT. Well, we, we know you will. All right, Region Nine, Nancy.
Region Nine, Nancy Fitzgerald. We had a great spring rally, well, February, well, into March, actually. It was a success. It was called Come and Stream It. It was in Gonzales, which is the birthplace kind of of Texas independence. It was a good turnout. We set a goal of a hundred rigs, and we surpassed that. And yes, we're real proud of ourselves. Our team just did a phenomenal job of organizing and planning a blend of cultural, historical, games, outdoor activities, kayaking, biking. It was just a lovely blend of something for everyone. And so we liked that template. We're in the black, you know, made a little seed money. And so we're looking forward to next year in Bandera, and we, we probably, which is the cowboy capital.
We're going to be there.
Of the world, I'm sure. So that'll be in May, and it'll, it'll be a fun time. And anyway, I appreciate so much the team that helped make that possible for Region Nine. Thanks.
So a bird handed me your flyer for your Region Nine rally. It's back there on the table. If you could just find sharing something interesting you did, which is the officer of the day. I thought that was really interesting.
Well, that is not unique to me. That, I think that is traditional. We have always assigned an officer of the day, and then kind of helped call out the activities to certain of our local clubs. So they're on duty, certain local clubs, with the officer of the day to make sure that the housekeeping things are done, and that serving is done, that cleanup is done, that coffee is made in the morning. That's the worst job in the world for, you know, me. And, and so that we just divvy up the responsibilities that way. And I think Millie was pointing out what really made it special is we include their phone number.
Yes.
You know, in case of emergency, whatever. And so it seems to work to divvy up the responsibilities and let local clubs, they did golf, we had golf carts, you know, to make sure that people could get back and forth through the little hilly. And so we had, you know, golf cart shuttle organizations. So there were lots of duties that the local clubs helped with and to pull it together. That seems to be a template that's working for us, and, you know, we're, we'll probably follow the same one next year. Fun.
Thank you for adding that.
Thank you for asking.
Kathy.
Kathy Gezi, Region Ten President, and I will also be coming off as President for my region. It has been a tremendous honor. Excuse me. I have to start off by thanking our Region Ten caravan chairs, Paul Wheeler and Janet Sucey, who are going to organize and bring in sixty-five to seventy-five rigs in the Rock Springs, Wyoming. Thank you, British Columbia, for organizing that. So we're pretty excited about that. With, throughout our region, we're well underway. We, you know, we rally year round in parts of our region. We have over fifty rallies, probably closer to sixty scheduled this year. Encourage everybody to come join us. We're a real fun group. We also, we have rallies for fishing, for hiking, kayaking, biking, and lots of wine drinking. We also host three national event rallies. We host the Potlatch Revival this year, which is a very popular national event rally that happened in the past, and it's been revitalized by the Washington Club.
Is there still room to register for potlatchs?
There is still room to register, and as a matter of fact, residents that live in that community have said if it fills up, that they will offer their driveways and water and electric, and yeah, they're being incredibly accommodating there. The Pendleton Roundup, which has happened for many years at the rodeo there in Oregon, and then the Sun Valley Jazz Festival that happens at Idaho. I am also very, very proud of my club presidents who are working hard to get out the vote for the election. It's going to be June 1st through 15th, so they're working on that. And we are well underway planning 2024. We're going to host a Grapes and Greens event in September, following the holiday, in McMinnville, which is the heart of our wine country in Oregon, Willamette Valley. And it's going to be prior to the International Rally in Sedalia, so I imagine a lot of people from that will be probably caravanning onto Sedalia, Missouri. And then we also have, next year, we only do a region rally every other year. It's large because we're a large territory. My vice president Florence Tremoni is already, actually, she spent this week in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. If anybody hasn't been there, it is spectacularly beautiful. The camp run is right on the lake. We're going to have boat tours on the lake. There's going to be so much fun going on there, and that's going to be in May of 2024. So, and I had to read my notes because there is so much going on in my department. But anyway, it's been an honor and a pleasure serving with everybody on this board.
Thanks, Kathy. Dewey?
Hi, Julie Cook, representing Region Eleven, and Four Corners area. And where do I begin? Our Region Eleven rally is actually going to be at the International Rally. Reason being is there are somewhere around three hundred rigs. I don't know what that is in people, but there are three hundred rigs that are registered, and it made perfect sense to rally with the people who are currently at a location as opposed to sending them off to another Region Eleven. So Stephen Parr made that decision, which I think is very, very smart. And that is, that is going to be a happy hour, which we all love happy hours. It's going to be a happy hour and a traditional happy hour where we all come together and we show off our wonderful cooking skills, or the wonderful cooking skills of the other people who will be arriving. So, and then we're also hosting a breakfast. Region Eleven will have a breakfast. And I, I think it's on Wednesday. It's, it's on the agenda, so be sure to sign up and join us for that. As I was brought into this, Stephen is not well, I mean, he isn't feeling well. It's not like he's not well. I hate to, I hate to have anybody think that he's not well. He just couldn't come to this event. So I was honored that he asked me, and it's been fabulous meeting everybody. So I can only really speak to what's going on in Arizona because I'm really involved with both Four Corners and the Arizona unit. There is, there are so many rallies and so many great people who are putting on the rallies. So go to, go to the websites, both for Four Corners and for Arizona, and you'll see what I'm talking about. The presidents of both those clubs are amazing. They've been able to bring in amazing support people. So join us. You will love us. It's very fun. Otherwise, I wouldn't go. And let's see. And like you, we rally year round. Not in the summer, in Phoenix, but in the outlying areas. And what do we do? I don't know. We just have a lot of fun, and they're really interesting places. So the. So the people who are putting the rallies together have put a lot of thought into where will we go for a rally that's interesting within the Four Corners area? I'm sure Colorado's doing a great job. Wyoming has really stepped up, and they're going to have a rally in September. And, oh, and New Mexico. New Mexico has got some pretty interesting stuff. That's within our region. And Lisa Sly is really great. She has stepped in, she's part of VAC, and she's part of Four Corners in the, in the New Mexico, in the Mexi, in the New Mexico unit, and she's wonderful. So I could go on and on, but enough already.
Thanks, Julie. And if Steve's listening, I want him to know that she has done Region eleven well. I hope that all of you have that bench strength in the Vice Presidents. Julie was asked to come at the last minute. We missed John, we missed Stephen, but he did a phenomenal job jumping in.
Thank you.
Full contribution the whole time.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. It's been great. Everybody said great, by the way. So those of you out there who couldn't be here, well, I'm sorry, but we had a lot of fun.
Regional, Region twelve.
So Region twelve is, Laverne McHenry, Region twelve President, and like the other even numbers, this would be my last meeting, last IBT meeting, not meeting in general. I'm going to stick around. In a sense, I've asked Abe, our incoming President, if I could be our Membership Chair for Region twelve, so I'll still have my little fingers here and there, so I won't be going away totally. So Region twelve, we have eleven local clubs. We are California and Nevada, and very active clubs. We're different just all over the place. We have two hundred, a little over two hundred and forty rigs coming to the International Rally. So we have a large group coming from many different areas. I'm not sure of the number of caravans, but we have multiple caravans coming in. We are just, yeah, I'm just really excited with our group. We have our region rally in October, which is our normal month to have our rallies in October. We're doing it this year at Pismo Beach, which is sort of central California, and it sold out. We have a hundred and fifty-two sites, and it sold out within, it was a month, month and a half, and we have a waiting list of another twenty folks. So that's a great, you know, RV park. We just couldn't get more sites. Next year, we are Cali Rally. If any of you want to attend a rally that I would consider, I refer to it as magical. We go to a ranch, and we park, and we disconnect, and the trucks, our co-vehicles go down the hill, and it's just a valley with beautiful trees and grass and Airstreams parked in every which direction, and it's just magical. And that's coming up in April of next year, so if anyone's not going to any Eclipse rally, that might be someplace to go. We have scheduled our region rally for next year because it's in, normally in October. We're scheduling it in September, and this year, or next year, we'll be going to Nevada. We are going to be camping in a town called Bishop, and it's on the Magical Highway three ninety-five, which is just, I love. So the idea is that members that are going to Missouri will be a little ways out, and we can kind of continue from there. So, yeah, so that's my report. Yeah. Thank you very much. I've really enjoyed this group, really enjoyed it. And, yeah, it's sad. I know it's my last meeting. I'm sad. So thank you. Thank you all.
Bart Fuller, Region one. We do our region rallies a little bit different than probably most here. We assign, or they volunteer, we should say, to each of our local clubs to do one of these rallies every couple of years, and we rotate it around. And so this year, we have a big shout-out to Eddie Carl and his team for putting one on out on Cape Cod, Massachusetts. It's going to be in East Falmouth. Their logo is flocking the cape, and it's going to be all flamingos all over the place. It's going to be featuring a big clam bake this year with Maine lobsters, Maine steamers, lobsters, and clam chowder. And for all you Bostonians out there that may be listening, they say lobster and chowder. Okay. Yes, so that will be happening June fifteenth through the eighteenth, and I've just been informed by my Vice President, Eddie Carl, that they have maxed out as of yesterday for all the sites, so we will start, we will be starting to take a waitlist for that. We have, we've just announced the 2024 Region Rally. It's considered basically a gathering. It's a little bit lower scale than our Region Rally itself, and that's going to be in May, sixteenth through the nineteenth, at the Brimfield Fairgrounds, or the Brimfield Antique and Flea Market, which is the world's, or the United States' oldest flea market, and probably one of the largest with five thousand dealers and over a million visitors attracting to this antique flea market. We're going to be not there on the flea market site, but we'll be in the next town over in Wales, Massachusetts. And so we're really excited that we were able to get this location for next year's rally. And I have another big shout-out to our Quebec folks who are working on the 2025. It's always, always way out, and they're working on something in Nova Scotia. They're getting out of their area and working over Nova Scotia for a potential in and around Kentville, the home of where Wally Byum Caribbean Club started. So that's all in the works, and we hope that everything will work out for our Quebec folks. We also have our traditional Columbus Day Canadian Thanksgiving Rally in Vermont every year, and Ty Mott will be running that. So we've got lots going on and a lot of, a lot of great enthusiasm in the region. And I will be around to kick around for one more year. Thank you. It's been a pleasure this year.
RJ.
RJ Marquette, Region two, President, for a while. Our Region two rally kicks off in three weeks from today, actually, and it's in Niagara Falls, Ontario, and we have about a hundred units registered for it. This is incredible for us. Last year, I think we had forty registered, give or take, and actually, we lost money on it. So this is a huge turnaround from that.
Why do you, can you share any insights into why you went from, like, doubled in one year?
Honestly, I think a lot of it is the Canadians could come.
Okay.
When we planned last year, we didn't know what the border was going to be like, and they weren't able to, you know, they didn't plan to come because they didn't know.
Thank you.
Apparently, they like to turn out for, for these, so, yeah. I have to give credit, though, to Ray Barak and the Ontario Canada Club. I have not planned this. They have done it, and, you know, we meet with them regularly, and it's going to be great. I can tell you that already. We managed to get Can-Am to kick in some money and all. It'll cover our food and all, so, yeah, this, it's going to be, it's going to be a good rally. Eric and I, Erica and I and the region are excited to be, the International Rally is going to be in York, Pennsylvania in 2025. We are really looking forward to that for reasons, reasons I won't get into. Erica and I actually camp at the York Expo Center where that's held. So for us, it's like in our backyard, basically. We go up there all the time. This is my last IBT meeting, so I'm not smiling.
Not too much.
I have to thank President, former President Rich Short. He, I came into this very late as the first Vice President, and he did so much to get me up to speed, and I just, you know. And then I've leaned heavily on Vice Presidents Gary Russo and Patty Galupo, and I have to thank them. I mean, without them, I probably would be going completely nuts right now. I also have to thank Erica. I know she's not listening. She's in Philly at a conference, but she's been very supportive and, you know, I think she kind of misses, and I do too, you know, camping by ourselves. You know, we like to have a mix, and we haven't done that the last few years, so, yeah, thank you, Erica. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, RJ. Christine.
Christine Baum, Region three. We are celebrating a very successful Region three rally that happened at the end of March, beginning of April. It was called Silver in the Sands, Take Two. It was in Myrtle Beach at a wonderful campground there that ends up being, when it's in full swing in the summertime, it becomes a city of thirty thousand. Ocean Lakes Campground is quite the place. The reason we called it Silver in the Sands, Take Two, is because that's where the Region three rally was scheduled during April, for April of 2020, and had to be canceled. So everyone was so looking forward to it, and we decided that that would be a place that was worth going back to. We had a hundred and ninety-six trailers that registered.
Whoa.
We lost about six a week before because of illness or breakdowns or unfortunate deaths in families. We had about three hundred and seventy folks that came in those trailers. We had wonderful weather. We had great seminars. We had good food. We had really fun entertainment, one being a musical bingo one night that ended up being very successful. But I could not have begun to put on such a successful rally without my Bobs, meaning my two Vice Presidents, Bobby Elley and Bob Hoffman. I am so grateful and so blessed that the three of us work so well together. They are so incredibly organized and just a total pleasure to work with. So thank you, guys. You know how much you mean to me. Also coming up in Region three at the beginning of August is a national event rally, Galax, the Old Fiddler's Convention Rally. This is the eighty-seventh year of the Old Fiddler's Convention. This is the twenty-third Airstream Rally, came a national events rally, because within the last couple of years, we are sold out at thirty-five. We have a waiting list of approximately ten, but it's a lot of fun. It comes up from the sixth to the thirteenth of August, and I like, my husband and I are actually the rally hosts for it. We took over from a very competent woman by the name of Betty Patton, who is truly a legend and still comes and still helps me, of which I am very grateful for. We have our next rally scheduled for Regions three. We are going to Dazwell in April, April seventeenth through twenty-first, and I feel pretty confident that we should not repeat the temperatures that Dazwell saw in July of 2019. There may be one day that could hit eighty or eighty-five, but I don't think we'll see the same temperatures that the nighttime temperatures were. So put that on your calendar because we're going to be hopefully offering a lot of little side trips focusing on the great history in that area. It's been a really great year so far, so thank you, and this has been a wonderful time here as well. So thank you all.
Thank you, Christine.
Brad.
Brad Briggs, Region four, President. In a few days, Tuesday, Region four is going to rendezvous in Kalamazoo, Michigan. That's when our Region four rally is going to be. And I'm very excited to have Eric and Laverne McHenry coming, as well as Karen Fisher and Wally Kimmel coming. So I'm getting anxious to get out of this meeting and getting going to that, even though this is my last IBT meeting. Also, next year, Region four is going to host a Eclipse rally not far from Jackson Center. Details are still being ironed out. It possibly might end up being a national event rally, rally. Fred, first Vice President Fred Keel is working hard on getting that pulled together. We are going to have a breakfast Sunday morning, June twenty-fifth, for Region four members at the International Rally in Wyoming. And I would like to thank my wife in particular for her support in the time I've been Region four President and coming up the ranks. I also like to thank Fred and Kathy Keel for their help, as well as Mike Passa and Jill McCaslin. They've all been a great help, and I've enjoyed my experience here, and it was a pleasure to serve the club. Thank you.
And I should also acknowledge that Brad has led the Region Presidents Forum for the last two-ish, three-ish, two-ish years. It's a fantastic job. And other things you may or may not know about Brad is that he has another sort of location here at Headquarters. He's here all the time helping out with the storage container and things around Headquarters. So thank you, and a number of other duties. So thank you for helping out Lori and her team when they're down here as well. That's fantastic you took the time. I know you're closer to a lot of them, but thanks for taking the time. It matters.
Thank you.
Terry. Region, that's you, man.
Well, Region six is one of our problems is, you know, September, October are the really nice winter months for camping, and a lot of our events are overlapping in that period. So our members have to pick and choose where they want to go. We have in Athens, Alabama, the Old Five Fiddlers Rally, which is, this is going to be the third year Terry and I have gone to it. And it may be the last year for it if they don't get somebody in the club to pick it up and run with it, unfortunately. It's a lot of fun, and it's on a campus, and it's just, it's absolutely beautiful. That little town is fascinating. The Region Rally this year, Jan Keener will be running it. It's going to be in Louisiana at the end of September, maybe the twenty-seventh, the thirtieth, and then followed a week or ten days later by Airstreams on the Square in El Dorado.
Yeah.
And if you haven't experienced that, Jan and her team have done an unbelievable job putting that together, and they have Small Town America, they have Main Street America. They have two full-time employees help promote that, and they've got a county judge that is just the red carpet. So it's a win-win deal for everybody. That's another great opportunity. And then another Region six rally would be in December twenty-four, north of Fayetteville, Arkansas. And I'm going to tell you, that's going to be, Jan and I collectively have been looking for a venue in Arkansas so we can showcase the state we're so proud of for years, and she finally found one, and it's right near the Crystal Bridges Museum, which is a world famous museum, and it's free entry, and there's so many things to do in that part of the country. Recently, they were saying that Fayetteville, Northwest Arkansas, is actually right up there with Houston for growth. I mean, it's exploding up there. A lot of that has to do with the corporate Walmart, AB Hot, Tyson. Walmart wants anybody who sells something in the store presents there, so there's a lot of growth there, but it's a great place to have, and it's a beautiful, beautiful place to have a rally. So I'm really ecstatic. This is my last IBT, but I'm sure we'll have some of the Zoom meetings between then. It's been, it's been quite an experience. You know, they say behind every good man is what? A great woman.
That's right.
That's absolutely true in my life. I don't think Terry's watching, but thank you.
I stopped by Headquarters last night to drop off some stuff, and all these empty boxes. I guess she's been building together new member kits. I don't know how many she did, but there's a whole bunch of empty boxes on the ground, so stuff like that really, it matters a lot, and people.
More importantly, she keeps me focused because they seem to bounce around in my head, and she'll, "Did you do that? Did you do that?" "No, no, no." "We better do it." So I wouldn't, I wouldn't have been able to do any of this without her. We just celebrated in April forty-fourth.
Nice.
Three thumbs for Grant, too.
Very awesome, man. Thank you. Great. Before I wrap- Before I wrap, I just want to give a little bit of a heads up for International Rally. We'll send something out. It's actually pretty much on the schedule on the website. But just so you guys know, we are doing a lot of the still traditional things. We're not throwing everything up in the wind, right? So, for example, on Saturday, there will be the standard opening ceremony preceded by the standard VAC parade, and be bigger and better than before. The VAC team will be, they work with the Downtown Merchants. They'll be escorted by Sheriff, Police, Barber somewhere from Rock Springs downtown up into the facility. We're going to have a flag parade, like we've not done it before, but it'll be an outdoor based parade in front of the VAC as they wind their way through the campground. There'll be a golf cart. It's going to be hopefully really nice. Everyone will be able to be sitting outside and viewing places and watch the VAC units go by, you know, preceded by a hundred and ten people with flags on golf carts. So it's going to be really a festive flag ceremony and VAC thing for the opening. We're going to have our standard GAM to get acquainted for first timers. We're going to have a service appreciation dinner, and that's for all of the leaders in the club. So for Region Presidents, Region Vice Presidents, for local club presidents, Vice Presidents, all that, and that'll happen, I think it's on Tuesday. On Tuesday. That'd be really nice. We'll have our, pretty much our standard closing and installation. And installation this year is a little bit odd, right? Because we know that we're going to be thanking the people leaving, and so it's the even-numbered Region Presidents, and pretty much the whole Exec Council leaves because our term is all up, no matter what. Well, actually, I'll be immediate pass, so whatever. We'll all be thanked for all of our work as we leave, and we're going to install the incoming even-numbered Region Presidents, like we always do. And also, we'll be able to install the nine-person Executive Council, right? Because the voting will be between June first to June fifteenth. And so by the time of the National Rally, we'll be, we'll be able to install the Executive Council, those nine people. We won't know who's going to be the officers, President, Vice President, Treasurer, Secretary, but we'll be able to have a fun installation and thank people for joining the team. So a lot of it's staying the same. There are some minor differences. We're trying to retain what our members like about our club and the history and the legacy, and also have a just a blast at Rock Springs. So with that, we're going to close this IBT. I'm going to ask that the Exec Council stay around for a few minutes. We want to see if we can take action on the kayakers intra-club, interest groups. Yeah, thank you. But everyone else can take off. Lori, you could turn off the Zoom meeting once you finish this meeting. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.